It must be. Otherwise, currently, it is well managed. Because if I'm reporting to, what is your name, sir? Sifiso, if Sifiso is my supervisor, if I am applying to work outside my work, it must start to Sifiso. Sifiso must agree that I will do my private work at seven P M. After I have knock off. Then, once he's signed, then it must go to the next, maybe the C E O of the hospital. Or any accounting officers who will approve to say, yes, I agree. So there is no way whereby I can go and do my work without Sifiso knowing. Because Sifiso, his job is to make sure that I am on duty from seven until four. And I am delivering what I'm expected to deliver and what I've been paid for. Then clause number thirteen, eh, it talks about to allow the H O D in exceptional circumstances to approve the paying out of a revenue an amount equally to that salary. Allowance, fees, bonus, and honorary. Or a portion thereof to an employee. So the H O D have got powers to give you any amount which is above your salary. If you have done something in the workplace. Remember, your salary and all your benefits according to their resolutions. Which wa- which is taken into the bargaining council. All your salaries, all your medical aid subsidies, all your housing allowance. They are negotiated in the bargaining council. That's why during the negotiation, you will hear said, oh, the housing allowance now it's one point seven. Now it's one point nine. No H O D have the power to say, I'm going to increase your housing allowance more than what is agreed collectively in the bargaining council. Now, this clause, it says, the H O D must be given powers to do that. If you agree with it, you say yes. If you don't, you say you don't. But now, this clause, it seems to be contradicting with clause fourteen of Mister Governor's law. The clause fourteen of the Pam bill, it says, all the remuneration, the disparities of the salaries, whether it is in municipality, in provincial office, or nationally. It shall be negotiated and it shall be in consultations with the Minister of D P S A. And the Minister of D P S A shall consult the relevant minister. It means the Minister of S A P S cannot just walk up today and say, I want to increase danger allowance for all the police. It can't happen. It means it, he must consult with the Minister of D P S A. And the Minister of D P S A is going to consult with the National Minister of Treasury. If there is money to give you. Now, once these ministers, they agreed that there is a money, we can do it. Then it can happen according to that law, clause number fourteen of the Pam bill. But this one, it says, the H O D can overrule the powers of the ministers and the powers of the premier. Because remember, the H O D get appointed by the premier. And that clause of Mister Governor, it says, the ministers would also in consultation with the ma- the premiers of a certain province. So that we all get the same benefit, the same salary. Now, this one, it says, the H O D can overrule the premier and increase the salary. Or other benefits. So eh, you can agree with it, you may not agree with it, it's up to you. Eh, clause number fourteen of this Public Service Act, it says, it seeks to amend section thirty-two of the Principal Act to provide a head of department may direct employees to temporarily perform other functions within the departments. So in other ways, if eh, I am the H O D or the D G of Social Development or Home Affairs. Then I realize it, the queue for issuing the death certificate, it's too long. Maybe they are not employees enough today. I can go to the employees who are doing the issuing of the birth certificate and say, can you please come and assist here so that the people can get their death certificate and bury their loved ones in time. So it says, the H O D must have these powers to remove temporarily and employees to go and assist somewhere. And also, the only things that I see here, it says there is no concern. So but if I give the same example to say I'm the C F O, then the H O D said, Foromo, I want you to go and assist in security. And go and search the people who are entering the department temporarily. So temporarily, he does not have timeframe. Whether I can go there for the whole year, it's still regarded as temporarily. What I see here is just say, it's fine, but you can agree with it, you can not agree with the clause. Then the same act again, it says, the executive authority may temporarily move the H O D to perform other functions within the departments. Eh, the H O D can, you are responsibility to manage the departments. Now, if I'm going to remove you from where you are managing the department, I say, go and assist in recruitment. Then I will appoint Mister Governor temporarily to act as an H O D. And this is what this clause, it says. And then the employee may up be appointed to act in a post in the relevant department by the H O D or employee occupying the post. So this one, the current law, it says, when you want to act in a position which is funded, you must be remunerated. And then the current clause says, you must, the positions, you can only act up to six months. After six months, probably the post will be filled. So, now here we are saying, the H O D can ask you or appoint you to act in a relevant post or in another department. But it is silenced with the remuneration. Because eh, the current one, if I act more than six weeks, I should be remunerated. Because I am acting in a senior position. But I know that there are colleagues who say they are acting without remuneration. But remember, the acting again, you must agree to say, I want to act. If you don't want to agree to act, it's still fine and there is no bad blood. Eh, I see it in the D P S A, my colleagues who are mostly whites colleagues. They have been long in the position. I think one colleague, she talked about pay progression. So now, if you have been long in the same position, your salary, it's almost at the end. So in terms of remuneration, there's no money that I'm going to get. So what I'm going to get is only problem, or I'm going to get an experience. So you must look it in both, what you'll benefit. So most of my colleagues, they refuse to act. And there's no bad blood. Because financially, they're not gonna gain. Probably, they are saying, they don't need experience any longer, especially if you are on your age of retirement. You are just about to go, you don't need any experience because you are just about to exist. So now, here it says, the H O D can. But I think what I'm seeing here is, there is no concern from the employee. I think that is the gap there. Eh, clause number fifty, it says, seeks to provide the Minister of D P S A the responsibility to determine the procedure to be utilized when employees refer grievances within the departments. So Mister Governor, he said, the Minister of D P S A is the Minister of the Department. He's also the Minister of hundred and sixty-one departments. Because he is responsible for the H R of government. So this clause, what it says, it says, can't this bill give the power to the minister to to determine the procedure? To say, if I am in Department of Sports and I've got my procedure, grievancy, and then it's end up in the M E C. If I'm not happy, I should be able to take it again up into the C C M A and wherever. Or ask, or ask any intervention. So this was said, may the Minister of D P S A determine those procedures. So now, eh, determinations, normally it's get negotiated. Because you need to talk about grievancy procedure, it must be followed. So it should not end up in one level. If I'm not happy with the outcome of the M E C, I should be able to take it to the C C M A. And then if I'm not happy with the C C M A, in that level now, it can be an arbitration. So an arbitration, it is binding, it is having the same power like a court order. So if I'm not happy with that eh findings, the out, the out, the outcome of the C C M A, the current law, it says, I can go to the Labor Court and challenge it. So here we are saying, the D P S A Minister can determine the processes of managing the labor, I mean, the, yeah, all the disciplinary crisis, the grievances processes. I'm not quite sure if it is interfering with what the Labor Relation Act, it says. Now clause number sixteen, it's deal with the political office. I think when I was explaining to you, the term political office, what does that mean? Eh, just to remind you, we talk about the chairperson, the secretary, and the treasury. And any other positions related or equivalence to those three posts. Now here, it says, if you are a chairperson of a political party, you cannot be employed as an H O D. Because there is a conflict of interest. So we are saying, if you are an H O D or you are reporting to the H O D. In this case, if you are a chief director or you are a director or any other person might be the administrator or the P A who's reporting to the H O D. But this P A is a treasury of a certain political party. Either nationally, provincially, regionally, or in the branch. So we are saying, if you are in that position, you cannot hold the position of power in government. So we are giving you twelve months to decide whether you want to be an H O D or you want to be a political, a politician. So within twelve months, you shall be given that period to decide. So we are not saying to you, you can't be a political, you cannot hold a po- a position of po- of your political power. We are saying, you must decide whether you want to be an official or you want to be a politician. And this one, it is coming from the N N D P. Remember the N D P, chapter thirteen, it says, there is a uneven political administrations issues. If I'm a chairperson of a political party in the province or in the region and I am a director and my M E C, he is not. It will be very difficult for the M E C to discipline me because I am his political head. So we are trying to eye in that things. So that if, if this director or chief director is not performing or this H O D is not performing, the political head should be able to have the power to discipline the H O D. Because that is what the law says. But if this H O D is the chairperson, I doubt if the M E C will discipline this person. Because the chairperson have the power to influence outside of the working place that you can be recalled as an M E C. Because you are not towing the law, the, the lines. So now, this clause number sixteen, it says, you can't have a positions in the polit- political power and then you also hold a position in government. The position is a position of authority. If you are not reporting to the H O D, you are just an administrator, but you are a chairperson. You can continue because your position is not a position of power in government. But you are going to declare. But if you are, we give you twelve months to decide. This is where you bring that terminology to say, the political office. Now, that's where now we bring it into clause number sixteen to say, we want to have a politically administrative working relationship good. And we can only have this if there is no a poli- political po- somebody who is in power in political party. And then we are hoping you are having a position of power in government. Then clause number seventeen, it's the same as clause number thirteen. Where it talks about, the H O D can give extra remunerations above what you are earning. Eh, I think I've explained that one, I don't want to repeat this one, is the same clause number seventeen, you read it, is exactly the same. But here it says, on a special qualification. Now, special qualification, it means already the current act, it does consider it. Because eh, most of the postgraduate qualifications in Department of Health, they are being considered. And even if you are not, you are being considered because if you get an extra qualification, the resolution, it says, you will be paid, I think is the salary of a level eight, if you are above. To say, thank you, you have got your masters in eh midwifery. You have got your masters in labor law. But now this one, it says, the H O D must get the power to decide to give you some remunations on top of that one. If I'm an administrator, I happen to get a P H D. And Sifiso, we were appointed together as an administrator and we are at level six together. If he choose not to study and I choose to study. This one, it says, the H O D may consider to say, ah, you have got a P H D. Eh, I'm gonna give you salaries more than Sifiso. But remember, the salaries are negotiated. Eh, but this is what it says, if you agree or you don't agree, it's up to you. Then clause number eight, it says, it deals with the recovery of the remunerations if you are paid illegally. So if we happen to pay you extra money by mistake, the current law and it refer with the constitutional court order. Where one of the doctor in the Department of Health was paid extra money. And then the department decided to say, we want to recover our money because we pay you wrongly. So that doctor, he take us to court. When I say as, I mean government. He take us to court and he won the case. To say, no, the employer, you don't have rights to deduct somebody's salary within his concern. Now, at this moment, we are operating under this court order. Now, we are saying, may this clause give the H O D powers to deduct the money in line with the court order. The court order says, the employee must contend to say, you can take your money. But now, a concern, it means there will be some negotiation. If we have given you ten thousand by mistake and your salary is nine thousand. Previously, the court order, we can take our ten thousand immediately. And then you, you, you owe us one thousand. Now, it was not considering your livelihood. Because if I take all your salary, how are you going to survive? How are you going to pay your school fees, the school fees of your kids? So but in this case, now we are saying, there will be a concern from the employer, said, listen, you are owing us ten thousand eh, we want to deduct the money. So maybe you can say, okay, you can deduct two hundred rent from my salary for the next twenty years. So it must be justifiable and reasonable. Okay, so now, we are saying, can we give the H O D the power to get the money back which we were wrongly pay you with your concern? Nineteen, it says, is the interpretation challenges section four eighteen as it relates to the president's power to matters relating to the appointment or career incident of the H O D. Here eh, it's more, remember, I told you that the H O Ds get appointed by the president or by the premier. So now, it's a matter of cementis here to say, instead of saying a deputy president or a minister, as it is now in the current law, can we say a cabinet, a member of cabinet? That is a cementi, to say, moving from the deputy president or the minister and we say, a member of cabinet. Member of cabinet, it does also talk about the M E Cs eh, because they are member of cabinet. Then clause number twenty is the last one. It says, may this bill also provide a provisions to shorten this bill to say, it shall be called Public Service Amendment Bill Act twenty twenty-three. Remember, the initial one is nineteen ninety-four. And then I think in nineteen ninety-seven, it was amended and it keep on being amended and amended. So in twenty sixteen, we amended it. So now it's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five. Then the amendment, it started in twenty twenty-three. On the date that the president will sign this. We are saying, can these provisions to be, to be provided to say, we shall call this act a Public Service Amendment Act twenty twenty-three? That's the end of my story.
Thank you, Mister Foromo. Um, Honorable Maker, I'm first going to allow for the public to make their inputs. And then afterwards, we will eh allow members to also make their inputs. So ladies and gentlemen, there you've got the eh, the presentation by the department. Uh, now it's up to you, you can now also give us your inputs. Um, anyone who'd like to come and speak to us, I'm going, only going to allow one eh, one. After the, after the, the inputs, let's first listen to them and then, okay. Uh, so only one round, uh, let's see. One, two, three, four, five. Only this round, so it's one, two, three. Let me just see the hands again. One, two, three, four, five, in that order. Please come to the front.
Eh, thank you very much, Chair. Chair, like I've indicated, my name is Marumo, my surname is Ma. Eh, my name is Rakwe and my surname is Marumo. Eh, Chair, I think the, this bill eh, according to my view and the way I have listened to the interpretations as well eh, is that it gives a lot of powers to the H O Ds. Of which even in now, I think was, were in this crisis because of eh, a difference between political heads and administrators. So once we give these eh administrators too much power, will be equally undermining the will of our people. Because they will equally undermine even in the same politicians. So Chair, without any waste of time, I stand to reject this bill, Chair.
Thank you eh. Eh, I want to first to touch with the issue eh, between the H O D and the political head. Eh, I think that I want to agree with this view of changing eh, this bill. Because we find that if the political head is interfering with the administrative issue, it become eh, a conflict of power. Eh, I will agree that the political head must work with the strategic plan to deal with the strategic and the administrative work. I mean eh, eh, H O D to deal with the administrative issue. Because most of the issues that we find that the political head is even interfering in the procurement process or interfering to the human resource process. So you want to differentiate the political head to deal with eh, strategic issue and then eh, eh, H O D dealing the administrative issue. Secondly, Chairperson, I want to check man eh, this issue that you'll find that eh, there is a council that is in eh, or is a teacher. And then we said that the public servant is working in forty hours per week. And wha- 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 what is the, the view of this, this changing of issue? Because I think when it become a council, we are working for a community. And we are starting to work at eight o'clock, maybe knock out or knock off at four o'clock. But when the community want the council, a council is a school. When the children want eh, eh, a teacher, a teacher is in the public eh, eh. A log sheen is dealing with the issue of sewer, is dealing with the issue of eh, eh, dirty and. So you wanted to, to check on that again. Eh, and lastly, eh, man, on the issue of eh, a we- eh, a month, when someone want to take early retirement, I, 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 I'm starting to take a, a different view because even if further up in the H O D, there is no need to go in clarity today, you must release me because I'm fed up with the H O D. What is the, why we waste my time to work for thirty days, thank you.
Eh, thanks, Chair. My name is Mami Le Mikeleini. Eh, Chair, I also wanted to comment on the issue of clause sixteen where specifically speaks of political power in administrators. Eh, Chair, already in the province, we have a crisis of very arrogant H O Ds in this province. Eh, men who are doing business with the provincial government will tell you that you will submit your documents, you'll be told the, the H O D has never signed. Two, Chair, the reality is that the, the H O Ds, most of them, they stay in suburbs. They are detached from the realities of the communities. You hardly find them unlike a political leader, find them in the communities attending to certain issues. That is why it become difficult to motivate the H O Ds to relate with the challenges that our, our, our communities are saving. We, we, we reject this proposal. The rema- the, the minimum requirement and experience or other necessary qualifications should be the order of the day, regardless you are a political leader or you are eh, 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 an academic. So these laws give H O Ds too much powers, we are going to have problems, this will already have problems. Thanks, Chair.
Oops, thank you. I don't know whether I should repeat what I said earlier, my name and all of that, okay. My name, Mapedi, surname Buchedi, eh, the provincial treasurer of Kossatu. Chair, I I would like to say that um, when it comes to the H O D being given the power to eh, run with the administrative part, we, not we, I do not see any problem um, as long as there will be a person that will be supervising because we are having a problem of people that be. we are having a problem of people that become arrogant with too much authority, uh, that is given to them. And now, my worry is that this now gives too much authority to H O Ds, where you will find that there is no one now, M E C cannot, uh, when is the, uh, political head cannot say anything to the H O D. So somewhere, somehow, we need to find the balance of how we are going to be able to control the H O D if we are going to give them the powers of being, uh, the administrative head uh, of the, um, the, 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 the department. Um, when it comes to, um, the second one of, um, the H O D being the one responsible to give um, bonuses and all of that, that one as well is going to open a can of worms. Um, we will find that, uh, those that are uh, teachers' pets, I don't know how to put it, are the ones that will be the mostly, that will gain, instead of them sitting and doing their, uh, uh, work allocated, they will be running to the office of the H O D, and now the H O D will be remunerating them for, uh, now being the teachers' pet. That one as well, uh, is going to give a problem, because, uh, I, I, I remember that, uh, what was taken was, um, Anabai, what do they call it, uh, pay progression? Uh, before pay progression, um, that we were getting performance bonuses. So this one, it goes, it, it, it looks like it's going back to performance bonuses, and it's going to open a can of worms for us, and we cannot control that one. Uh, it's going to be an issue. Um, now, we have two bills that we are amending today, which is the P S A, P S A and the Palmer. Um, the Palmer is stating that, um, the employee should give consent, uh, if they will be transferred. This, uh, is saying something else. Somewhere, somehow, I find a contradiction, and how is this contradiction going to be, uh, 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 served? Because, uh, if Palmer say I must give consent, and now we find that ultimately we have a case, uh, which one are we going to be looking at? Because, uh, the P S A is saying, uh, the H O D can just wake up and say, I'm transferring you to a certain place, and I don't have to give consent. Thank you. Thank you.
Once again, close sixteen where it talks about limitation of political rights. I believe that in this day and age, it will be altogether wrong for this bill to want to do that. Remember that I've got a right to participate. It's a constitutional right that I have as an individual. Therefore, also, our government is mostly based on politics. How do I then, as a member of the very same community, not align myself to any political party irrespective anyway? Remember that the constitution clearly states that I do have a right. I understand also the is a limitation of statutes that is also maybe somehow being looked into. But for now, the constitution stands. And as it stands, I've got a right to participate and it should never be taken away. Right now, as it stands, the political office is due to bureaucracy. We are having a serious issue because someone in the minister's office of Kogta, once upon a time, just before this term office came in, they decided to sign a document that the politician was supposed to sign for staff establishment of offices. Someone who sits somewhere in the national department somewhere, he decides that in the speaker's office in March having, there should only be one public participation officer, researcher and what. How do you establish a staff in someone's office, a political, like in an institution that's supposed to have its own constitutional mandate? National government, remember also, we also have, it was, it was, it was, it was intergovernmental relations, where it clearly states where each and every sphere of government stands. National department, someone decides because he's an HOD, he's highly educated, he feels that no politicians don't have a right to establish how many people should be in their office. He decided that he will just put it into action. The minister does not know about that because they've got electronic signature, they put it on and then it goes. And now we deal with the issues that we need to, there's an issue there. I believe Salga is in negotiations with national government, but that clearly shows us that somewhere, somehow, too much power corrupts. Politicians have a right to run their affairs as in whichever way they see fit. And they need to, we need to have a balance between politicians and administration. And if one leg has too much power, there are going to be issues. Therefore, na balasachaka, I reject this public service amendment bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Just to remind everyone that I am Leratulapata. I'm from Kossadu local. Although it might sound like I'm repeating what has been said, at the onset, we reject the suggestion that the political heads must be stripped of the powers they have. I think it misses the rationale and the wisdom of the initial decision to have ministers having the powers they have or MECs or whatever you call them. So I also, like with the other speakers, I reject that this power should be transferred to a head of department. Now, the other issue that I want to speak to, it is the power to ask someone to act in a position. In a lot of government department, people are abused. I don't know if Ntadese was just an example of what, where you find that you are asked to assist someone in another section to do something. A lot of times, we have work cards being overused, meaning they are overparting with someone else's work because the department does not want to hire someone and pay them. So I don't think that should be allowed. There should be specific processes that are in place and also there should be limitation to it. And if I'm doing someone else's work, I should be paid for it. I should not be paid to do someone's work when the government is not willing to fill that vacant. However, I want to say that I agree with that when you retire before the age of sixty and then you should not get any penalties. I mean, it must not only be, as far as I know, it's only Ivan Pele when he was in Saris, when he resigned today and tomorrow he reported and no penalty was given. And I don't think it should be exceptional cases. We should normalize it so that everyone can do it. But I think we need to be clear on what are sufficient reasons. If I'm the HOD and I have all the power to interpret sufficient reasons and I don't like Comrade Bucheidi, I mean, it only means that I'm going to reject her submission. Now, also, in terms of the section sixteen B, clause ten, that if a notice of a disciplinary hearing was given to an employee, the relevant HOD shall not agree to a period of notice of resignation. On paper, this sounds nice, that you are running away from something, but we know a lot of times you can be frustrated by your supervisors. Someone can constantly harass you, accuse you of wrongdoing with a predeed mind outcome because we know you can get dismissed and the processes of getting reinstated can take a huge toll on you financially and emotionally. So you should be allowed to leave if then there's been wrongdoing because remember, a hearing can be conducted in absentia and then the department will do whatever necessary legal recourse to recover whatever that it might be stolen. Because I can get a notice and it gets extended. Instead of the hearing sitting on the thirtieth, it gets a postponement and I'm suspended, I'm giving another notice while I'm still on suspension. They're tallied, so I decide that I want to resign. So we should not, we should allow people to resign like Ntadese said. If I'm fed up, I should leave. Any wrongdoing, there are recourse, we have legal recourse in the country to recover whatever that I might have stolen. And also, I think the limitation of political rights. We want to de-politicize government and government is a political creation. I don't understand this thing. And in reality, I can never be HOD and be chairperson of my MEC, something might be wrong, or of my minister. It's like saying a director general in the presidency can one day wake up and find himself president of ANC and then Sir Ramaphosa is just an ordinary member. That never happens. Let's allow people to participate and if there is a wrongdoing, if I'm a minister and my chairperson is an HOD, I'm not dealing with them at a chairperson level. There are procedures in government, there are government regulations in place. I must do that. It's like saying I committed fraud because the minister forced me. Where's the responsibility? Allow people to participate, allow people to be politicians because I think we are making decisions based on maybe the current climate, but we are not seeing the unintended consequences of it. So unfortunately, I reject the bill in its current form. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Feroa, I think it's time that you reply to some of the issues. While you do that, I'm going to put you on the spot. Considering that we are saying it's one government and one public service and public administration, surely, when it comes to bonuses, which is hardly contentious issue sometimes, is there a performance management system, a universal performance management system within government which is implemented through all spheres of government and is it effective? Because that should guide us on bonuses. So if you could maybe just give us some clarity on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson. I will start with your question. Is there any performance system in government? Yes, we have a PMDS. It's a system that measures the performance of every employees and by law, every year, every government employee should be assessed. And then if you are not assessed and then you get level three, you do not get pay progression. So there is a system in government. And then all of this question, Chair, I don't think they need me, they will refer to you, the parliamentarian, that will handle them. The only one just to clarify it is the work of a councillor versus an employee. The current law and the proposed one, it still allow you. But what I'm not quite sure, I'm leaving it to the chairs and the parliamentarian about whether if one is a councillor, is it equivalent to a chairperson, a secretary or a treasurer in terms of their functions? So I'm leaving it to you there. And then if in case they are not equally, a councillor with the current law, you are allowed to apply renewations of work outside the public service. Because my understanding for one to be a councillor, you get paid. You get paid. And then also, you are a government employee, we are also paying you. So the example which the colleagues give it to say, if I am a councillor and the community wants me to go and address the issue of water. Now, if you are a teacher, what are you going to do with those learners? Are you going to leave them and go and attend it? And if you are a police officer, are you going to leave to assist the community, to arrest the perpetrator and go and attend the water? If you are a nurse or a doctor, are you going to leave the patients to die in your consultation in the hospital and go and attend water? So I'm leaving this to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Feroa. I think I'm going to allow the members of the committee to just make inputs as well. Honorable Mayku.
Chair, same way, let's welcome the inputs. I think that it is important that we don't remember, I mean, we don't forget the starting point. And one of the most important starting point is that for any other law that this country will make, subject itself under the supreme law called the constitution. Very key. The reason why we do like this is to ensure that whatever that we will decide about will not antagonize another laws elsewhere. Equally important in terms of our life. In other words, the law on health, if we take a decision here, it shouldn't contradict that pieces of the legislation elsewhere in other areas of our life. It becomes very important for us. Now, the laws of our country are largely informed by our country's political system, which is dictated by our electoral system. In other words, different from other countries. South Africa is a constitutional democracy country. It's political parties that contest elections as opposed to a constituency-based system where anyone can contest and be elected. The fundamental that our country has raised about these two types of electoral system. Okay. You want to look at the window being closed? I wouldn't have any issue with that. I must respect your interest. But my worry is that what value are we deriving from there? On a lighter note, so the point I was making is that between the constitutional democracy and the constituency-based electoral system, in the other, people elect a particular political organization and that organization is accountable to them. Whereas in a constituency-based system, the assumption is that that particular individual will account to the people who have not experienced, is a kind of articulated, I'm not sure about its practical content, but it's happening in the US and other countries where it becomes individuals who are elected. So as we look, Doc, into these pieces of legislation that we are, that we are amending because our country is evolving, the needs of the people are evolving. And naturally, it must warrant those changes in the legislation because the context is how best to serve the people. And somebody made here of the clause in the Freedom Charter that says, government of the people, by the people, for the people. When the country was responding to our history in terms of, so that context is quite very key. The intention here is not to draw parallel, parallels between the politicians and the They must dynamically infuse and ensure that ultimately the service delivered. That's what all of us must be obsessed about. It's an issue of the system, but the fundamental must not be undermined, dismissed, that ultimately people elect their leadership and the leadership must be accountable to the people. I thought I should narrate a little bit about that. Equally, in terms of local government, this country has evolved since the inception of local government. And Doc is correct, or somebody made a point about it, differences between national province and local government, there's a sphere of governance in the country. We were from a period where anybody and everybody could be a councillor. And the country, based on our experiences, as we're evolving, then reconsider. And I was just checking with my colleagues, local councillors by law are full-time and must be full-time. You can't have a local councillor who is still employed elsewhere. You can't have that. But the PR, public, the PR, there's still some measure where they are allowed to be flexible. So when you are looking for a public representation, I mean representative to attend to your agent issue, it must be a local councillor. PRs are also saving other responsibilities. But who knows, maybe we will evolve as well to a future where if you're a public rep, you must be a public rep. I think the doctor was making that point and the input about, hey, kids were looking for a teacher and the teacher is busy with a portal and then when people were crying about that hump or kids are being by cars here, this person is in class. So the evolution also of our country and our experiences has made us to intervene so that that matter has been attended to. I did make the point about the process of the making of the laws. Admittedly, Doc, it's highly technical. Now, learning from these experiences, we're also even confessing amongst ourselves, how can we do it differently, much more better, so that we encourage maximum participation? Otherwise, we'll be undermining the foundation of our democratic system because if people can't participate, we cannot rightfully claim to be a democratic government by the people and for the people. So this thing as well in terms of our work as parliament of oversight, we're agree, learning from the points that you are raising here, that there's got to be an effort to strengthen this process. Our people needs to be empowered. If I may have to make an example, our support staff must be clear who's going to be invited and people must get this document a week or so, go through it, go through them. And secondly, and we've been entertaining this point, they must be printed in your preferable language. These are the things that we say we will look into as we are seeking to better the future in relation to our work as government. The last one, it's just an interesting point. You know, there are good intentions which must be encapsulated within the law. But there's also human nature. And we're not speaking because we've, we say some of the things because we've existed and there's an experience about them. Or once human nature kicks in, you know, that's why there's syndicates. Syndicate is not an action of one person who will try to be noted. Syndicate is people coming together and organize themselves systematically to undermine a particular system. So as well, government system can be deliberately and consciously being undermined just for people to pursue corruption or self-benefication through the finances of the people, which must be intended for the people. So we need to take that into account as well. And I know that at this level, issues might be highly technical or no, if this person is given the responsibility, we're expecting that particular person to do as expected. Yes, but that's why our prisons are full of people who have done corruption. And we can't do as if it's not reality. We can't behave like an ostrich. Here is a problem. It is complex. Let's put our heads into the sand. We think up until we're blowing our face to say, what is the solution? We lack leadership to be able to do that on our behalf as the people of our country. To say, given the complicity and of course, the intention of people who are obviously malicious, what can we do extraordinarily to ensure that this problem is resolved but in the interest of the fact that our people must get services? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Mayku. Although this is a meeting by this portfolio committee, this meeting is actually your opportunity to give us your input. So what we're going to do now is I would like an indication again by hands, who supports the bill, who does not support the bill? So let's start. Those who support the bill, please raise your hands. Those who do not support the bill, please raise your hands. Good, so that gives us an indication. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to the end of this public meeting, public hearing on the two bills. Just for those who still want to make submissions on this bill in writing, you can do it also on the website, www.fsl.gov.za. There's a quick document and service to be able to do it there. Let me just remind you, www.fsl.gov.za. And if you want to send your written submissions to our committee coordinator by email, you can do it at chabana c, let me spell that, C-H-A-B-A-N-A-C at fsl.gov.za. And the deadline for this particular bill, the second one, will be the second of May 2025. So you have until the second of May to be able to do this. I just want to check something. Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your indulgence today, for your inputs. Like Honorable Mayku said, there were quite a few interesting inputs and things we can actually consider when we go into the mandates for these bills. I've just been told that the caterers are on their way, so please stay seated so we can just wait for the caterers and the food to be delivered. And then ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. God song and have a lovely afternoon. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, please just remember, please hand in.